Okay, good morning everyone and welcome to the Mount Isa City Council Ordinary Meeting. The time is 9am and I now declare the meeting open. To start off by, Mount Isa City Council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land, the Kalkadoons, and pay respects to elders past, present and emerging. Please note that this Ordinary Meeting of Mount Isa City Council may be livestreamed and recorded in accordance with the council's recording of council meetings policy. As a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded. By remaining in chambers, it is assumed that your consent is given if your image is inadvertently broadcast. That takes us now to item two, and that is a prayer from the clergy. And I'd just like to welcome Natalie Steele and from the Salvation Army to do a prayer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councillors and ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for the introduction and for inviting me here today. We've acknowledged the traditional owners and one another here. And my role here today is for us to pause and draw attention to God and then to pray for an opening for this council meeting. But before I do this, I have a question for you. You can jump in and give me an answer if you like, that'd be nice. Do you have a favourite sitcom? Yeah?
How I Met Your Mother.
Pardon?
How I Met Your Mother.
Oh yeah, okay, yeah, very good. Anyone else? Anyone else have time to watch some TV, to relax at the end of the day? Maybe, you know, The Prince, classic, you can watch that over and over again. A Country Practice or The Office? Come on guys, must be The Office, right? Why do we love sitcoms so much? Have you ever thought about that? I think it's because we watch a group of people that we get to know, episode after episode, work through misunderstandings, rudeness, dramas, people being selfish or insensitive, an argument, some kind of conflict. But yet, at the end of a 30-minute episode, relationships are restored. And there's lots of laughs along the way. But essentially, they are forming a community. I think the popularity of these shows is because it deeply resonates with something inside of us that we all long for. It's all good, it's good and true. We all have a deep longing to be a part of a family, a community that is just like that, able to work through all the stuff that life throws our way and that we throw each other while sticking together. Essentially, it's inspiring. What else is it that inspires us? That's like a ray of light in the darkness. A friendly smile to a stranger. It's a great thing here in Mount Isa that people still take the time to pause and look someone in the eye and smile at a stranger. Or when you see someone who's hurt another person go and genuinely ask for forgiveness. Courage in the midst of danger or great personal risk. Kindness in the midst of adversity and dark times. Generosity at one's own expense. We see these things and they're like light shining in the darkness. They resonate with us in our hearts on a deep level that these things are good and true, they're inspiring and they encourage us to be like that. In the Bible, in John chapter one, it says, "In the beginning was the Word, and the Word was God; and the Word was with God, and the Word was God. He was with God in the beginning; through him all things were made; without him nothing that has been made was made. In him was life; and that life was the light of all mankind. The light shines in the darkness, and the darkness has not overcome it." Isn't it amazing that in a completely dark room, no matter how small a flame, the darkness cannot overcome the light? So with that thought there, I'd like to invite you to join me in prayer today. Lord God, today as we assemble in this place, we acknowledge that your presence is with us, the light that shines in the darkness. I ask that you would make us alive and awake to your presence with us today. Before this council meeting begins, we take a moment to remember all that we love and enjoy about this community of Mount Isa, our home. This beautiful, colourful rugged landscape. The diverse people that call it home. The amazing colours and textures. The solitude of the outback. And our hearts are filled with gratitude and thanks to you. We pray for wisdom at all levels of leadership, here in this council, at home, in our families, in this city, and businesses and organisations, indeed in our nation and in this world. We pray for wisdom and patience and peace as we struggle against the COVID virus. We thank you for the continuing protection of our own community. We acknowledge the sometimes difficult task of working together to build our community into a place that is safe, that is accessible, that's welcoming and enjoyable for all people. We ask that you help those here today as they discuss the issues and make decisions which impact the welfare and the future of Mount Isa residents and the visitors to these lands. We pray you bless them with patience for the task, wisdom as they make sometimes difficult decisions, abundant grace and love for one another and some really good laughs along the way. In your name, Jesus, we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much for that Natalie, that was great. Okay, councillors, if we turn to page six and item four, 4.1. So I'm gonna, we're gonna confirm previous minute meetings, starting with an Ordinary Me... Oh, I have a missed public participation. I've done that one. Recording wasn't public. Oh, sorry. Okay, all right. The minutes of the meeting are now suspended so we can hear from the public gallery.
Thanks for allowing me to address the meeting. Just a couple, firstly, I'd like to mention a shopping mall in West Street has closed down. It's started 26 years, it's very sad because they've sold all their properties and everything. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah, fine.
That's very sad news over the next few weeks. But I want to report on a team in Kakaoa Road, Golds Hill, the pre-sealed road, which was a brilliant job. Then a couple of days later, it turned up to paint the white lines. And they painted white lines, but they found that the legal centre by the time got to halfway along the road. So two weeks later, or two days later, the team turned up again to spray all the white lines with black to cover them up. And then they went away. And then two days later, another team came up, totally, to spray a new white line down the absolute centre of the road. It was an unbroken line, and I was concerned that when you do U-turns, you'll be fucked because you can't, you're not supposed to cross over an unbroken white line. And I asked the police. Morning, they've turned up again, another team, including about 10 people, traffic control staff and everything. And now they're spraying black intermittently along the white lines to make it up, to break the white lines up.
Yeah.
And so I was speaking to them and I feel that there's enormous lack of communication between contractors and the Mount Isa City Council. Because it's cost the ratepayers a lot of money because it's been done three times more than what it should have been done with painting, cost of painting also. And the team was about 18 people. Doesn't happen anywhere else. The council could have a look at it, and it's worth a sight to travel along Kakaoa Road and see that. These white lines and black lines.
Thanks Peter. And does the final outcome look good? Is it?
Well, this morning, they started spraying black. It's going to be broken white lines.
We've got it right in the end?
It's been a very expensive venture for the council, so I hope it doesn't, there's more here written instructions to...
Yeah. Look Peter, thank you so much for bringing it up. I might just go over to Renee and see if she can give us a bit of an update on that one. Yeah. No, thank... Yeah, definitely, thank you Peter. Oh, look, and I... Yep. Yeah, well, thank you Peter, thanks for the feedback and, you know, we'll definitely take that on board and try and work with that going forward. Yeah. And yeah, I definitely get the white line. So it's important that the public do communicate with council because that's how we fix things and fix them quickly if the public come to council and let us know. So thank you for that. All right, so we've got a new agenda and we'll probably go very slow today to get through it because we're just having a few TVing difficulties. So I'll try and read out the page numbers so we're all on the same page going forward. So the next one is page six. I must have the wrong one. Ah, yep. Sorry, I'm going on the one with the page numbers and I should be going off this one, so I'm back on it. Okay, so could I have someone put forward the following motion? That council accepts the following supplementary reports. Item 9.7, submission into inquiry into housing affordability and supply in Australia. Item 9.8, 100 years advisory committee meeting minutes. Item 10.11, North Queensland Sports Foundation 2021 North Queensland Sports Star Awards, councillor delegation. Would someone like to move that please?
I'll move.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Would someone like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you councillor Fortune. All those in favour? And that's carried. We have no apologies and no leave, so that takes us now, I've been trying to, to item 4.1, which is on page six. And... So I'll keep hold of that, two agendas to serve, don't make a mistake here. All right, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation that the minutes of the Ordinary Meeting held on the 21st of July 2021 be received and recommendations therein be adopted?
I'll move, Barwick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Would someone like to second that motion? Thank you councillor McCrae. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of this one? All those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us to item 4.2 and it's actually page 27, so if you want to skip to page 27. Okay, so that's 4.2. And the officer's recommendation that the minutes of the special meeting held on the 4th of August 2021 be received and the recommendations therein be adopted. Would someone like to move that motion?
Yeah, move, Barwick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Would someone like to second that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Any comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. The second one now, the third one now is on page 32, 4.3. And would someone like to move the officer's recommendation that the minutes of the special meeting held on the 18th of August 2021 be received and the recommendations therein be adopted?
McCrae.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Would someone like to second that motion?
Streton.
Thank you councillor Streton. Any comments on this one? And that, all those in favour? And that's carried. All right, so I'm not jumping... So the next one takes us to action five and that is actions from previous council meetings, and that's nil reports for that one. And the next one is item six, which is declarations of conflicts of interest. Has anyone, has any councillors here any conflicts of interest in regards to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to declare a declarable interest in item 13.3, the landfill tokens, because the real estate is my brother.
Thank you. Will you be staying in that?
No, I'll be leaving please.
Thank you. Okay, so that takes us now to item seven. Now, there's a merril minutes and there's nil reports at the moment, but the idea behind the merril minute is to give an update of what's been happening at council and what the mayor has been up to for the previous month and things that we're working on. So we'll have that for our, we're going to start that for our next meeting next month and hopefully that just keeps the community updated and what's happening at council, what we're working on, the meetings we're holding and give the community a better idea of what's happening. So that's a great report coming forward. So this takes us now to, just making sure I get the page numbers for everyone, so reading and consideration of correspondence, so if you go to page 43. Okay, so would someone like to move the motion that council receives and accepts the June 2021 correspondence report?
Yeah, move, Barwick.
Thank you councillor Barwick. Would someone like to second that motion?
Streton.
Thank you councillor Streton. Any comments on this one? Nope, all those in favour?
Sorry, three minutes, can we just change the date?
I didn't even pick that up, sorry.
Can we please put down that that would be...
Definitely, so Deputy Mayor, oh sorry.
Sorry, who moved that?
Who moved that?
I did, yeah.
Yep.
Deputy Mayor, if you're happy enough to have it...
Absolutely, yeah.
July 21, please.
Okay, also moved, thanks.
Yeah, Streton.
Streton. Thank you. Few TVing problems, but hopefully we'll get past this. All those in favour? Oh. Did anyone? I did ask that, but I didn't... So carried? All right. That takes us now to the executive services reports. So that's going to take, kick us off on page 74 and that's item 9.1. I'll just give you a bit of time to get to 74. And this is the Mount Isa Christmas and New Year close down for 2021, 22. And the officer's recommendation is that council support closing the administration office, library, works depot, batch plant and material sales office from close of business from 12pm midday Friday the 24th of December 2021 and to reopen on Tuesday the 4th of January 2022 on the following grounds. One, departments that deliver essential services, i.e. waste management, water and sewage and infrastructure services will be skeleton crews rostered on and on call over the Christmas New Year period to cover any emergencies and to provide essential services to the city. Two, directors to determine sufficient support staff for the rostered skeleton crew as required. Three, other than statutory holidays, time taken off by staff during this period to be either flexi time, RDO, annual leave or a combination of both. Four, appropriate advertising be arranged. Would someone like to move that motion?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, just before you move that motion, can we please change that? There is a typo that's in there.
Okay.
And that is that it should read that council close, support closing the admin building etcetera from the close of business. And I think we discussed with councillors, the next bit it says from 12pm midday Friday. So I'm going to suggest councillors that close of business be removed.
Ah, yes.
It should simply be from 12pm midday on Friday the 24th.
Yep, that's great, so noted. Yep. Would anyone like to move that motion?
Certainly, Madam Mayor.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Madam Mayor, I think it's fairly standard practice for our council and for other councils to have those, that period off in between Christmas and New Year. And it's a, you know, it's a practice across the business community for the most part as well, so happy to see that, thanks.
Thank you. All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us to 9.2, which is on page 77. And that's media and communications report for July 2021. The officer's recommendation is that council receives and accepts the July 2021 media and communications monthly report. Would someone like to move that motion?
Move, Barwick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Would someone like to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. So it's a normal sort of programme that's been run during the month, so we see the usual array of social media posts. Also, we see the media releases that have gone out and the interviews and that have been conducted with the media. So I think it's all fairly well captured there and it's fairly active, so that's great, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to 9.3, which is on page 79, which is encroachments onto council land from adjoining landholders. Now, I don't know if I'm, this is councillor Fortune, sorry, I've jumped in and done a few of these when I should be asking councillors. So councillor Fortune, would you like to move the motion for this one?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move the recommendation that council agrees to offer tenure to adjoining land, sorry, excuse me, adjoining landholders of the existing encroachments on Dubuquannon Park described as lot 11 on RD3, sorry, RD235 by way of a, offering a trustee permit for a term of three years over an area immediately adjoining landholders near the property boundary; b, finance department to determine applicable fee; c, for the purpose of stabling racehorses only and associated infrastructure; d, adjoining landholders must provide evidence of being a full or part owner of the house, housed racehorse or horses; e, compliance with local law requirements and similar terms and conditions to the current council horse paddock shall apply, including successful credit assessment; f, the permittee is responsible for obtaining all relevant building permits and final certificates within six months from entering into a trustee permit with council; g, council declines to offer any adjoining landholder use which are inconsistent with the purpose of the deed of grant in trust shall require the adjoining landholder to remove the encroachments and debris from lot 14 on RD235 and re-estate the true common boundary within three months from receiving formal notification from council; h, council agrees to allocate a budget for the removal and disposal of any remaining infrastructure and debris from the encroachment areas; and i, council agrees for council planning officers to undertake the appropriate development approvals and waive the applicable fee.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Would someone like to second this motion?
Seconded, Coghlan.
Thank you. Councillor Fortune, would you like to talk on behalf of this motion?
I'll just give a bit of background on it, Madam Mayor, thank you. The trustee, trusteeship over lot 11 on Crown Plan RD235, which is Dubuquannon Park, was transferred from the Mount Isa Race Club to the Mount Isa City Council in 2004. A number of pre-existing structures and yard extensions situated on the eastern boundary from the adjoining landholders remained and include horse stables, fencing, sheds, round yards, shipping containers, general yard extensions and carports which are considered encroachments. Many of the existing structures were constructed prior to council taking over the trusteeship. It is not known if the former trustee's consent was obtained for these works to be undertaken and council records do not indicate any relevant building approvals were obtained for these buildings, structures, other than a single stable which did not receive a final building certificate. It is noted, not all landholders adjoining Dubuquannon Park have encroached. And there's a locality plan to that too as well, so just background on it. And this particular issue has been in play since 2004. And it's a, I think it's a requirement of council to protect our interests and the ratepayers' interests by bringing these encroachments into the system where they can be controlled in a legal manner.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Would anybody else like to comment on this one?
I'd just like to check something, I don't know whether my hearing went there. The trustee permit is only for three years, not 30?
That's correct.
Why does it say 30?
No worries. Thank you.
Through the chair, yeah, look, just on that point with the trustee permit, I'd actually think it's a bit short. I'd like to see it probably go up to five, if it's possible, or perhaps even to 10, but at least five, that's in section A of it. And also with F, where they're allowing relevant building permits and final certificates within six months, I think that's a bit short as well, given the nature of the building industry around Mount Isa. I'd like to see that go up to 12 months to allow the residents to bring it up to standard. So I'd like to suggest those, a couple of changes to the recommendation.
Through the chair, if those changes are to be recommended, would also G, the reinstatement if the landholder doesn't remove the encroachments? There's three months there. Would you like to put a time extension on that if we do entertain the proposal?
Yeah, I think so too.
Through the chair, could we not leave it at six months and then extensions be applied for if it's not possible to do it in that time due to town planning or building? What is actually involved? Is it just applying to council and getting them approved?
Through you, Madam Mayor, yes, I believe that is the case. I've got the coordinator here at the moment, if I may go through the floor. Donna, are there any implications that apply out of these changed times that we're restricted by legislation? Through you, Madam Mayor, going back to the comments made by the people, the three years can't change, but in relation to the six months and the three months, those ones, I'm guessing are available to be changed? So through you, Madam Mayor, for the sake of going through this process and making sure it gets underway, it would be beneficial if we could stick with the recommendation and make the extensions as opposed?
We'd finalise them, Madam.
We'd finalise them, Matt.
I'm okay with it.
I'm happy to stick with what the officer's recommendation. They're the ones that put all the work into it and know all the legislation. So I'd rather follow what, what they want to do.
I don't think there's much choice there in the end.
Yeah, I do think the deputy mayor's correct though. Try getting a builder round in six months, you'd be very lucky too. Yeah.
We can get extensions for that, yeah. I think everyone's well aware of the problems in Mount Isa with it, so I don't think council would, you know, not look on it favourably because, yeah, there's a lot of other people in the same boat.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so that now takes us to page eighty eight. Item nine point four, proposed disposal of council asset. Eighty eight, yep.
Yep, eighty eight.
Again, this is to councillor Fortune.
Thank you. Through the chair, I'll make the recommendation that council, excuse me, I've got the wrong one. Eighty eight, page eighty eight, yes. The recommendation is that council registered, registers the new survey plan and disposes of by sale in as-is condition, the lot currently described as part of lot one on Crown Plan MPH three double one zero two, fourteen Ryan Road, Mount Isa.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion? McCray. Thank you councillor McCray. Councillor Fortune, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just through the executive summary, the background, sorry, the, in February two thousand and eighteen, council resolved to approve the disposal of, of part of the lot one, Crown Plan MPH three double one zero two, and it's fourteen Ryan Road, as part of a land transfer with the state for thirty to forty brilliant street. Whilst this was agreed to by both parties, the state in the end decided not to relocate the SES to the site and the disposal was never progressed. So as part of the preparations for the land transfer, the lot was valued and resurveyed to exclude the Department of Defence lease area and create the SES, SES leased area as a standalone parcel. And to date, the survey plan remains unsigned. So the recommendation aims to move that along.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Would anybody else have any comments on this one? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us now to item nine point five, which is on page ninety seven, endorse application to purchase unallocated state land.
Okay, the recommendation through the chair, I'll move that council endorsed the application to purchase unallocated state land described as lot three on AP three five three five, subject to the lot being amalgamated, amalgamation into adjoining lot forty two, Crown Plan MPH one five eight six four, and all costs associated with this application are met by the applicant.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Would someone like to second this motion?
Stratten.
Thank you councillor Stratten. Councillor Fortune, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Oh, yeah, it's similar to previous requests that council have had for the addition of previously permitted land that adjoins these properties to be bought by the, purchased and improved by the owner of the land currently at state land. That state issues a permit for the use of that land by the landholder and the landholder just wants to bring it in to as part of their property.
Thank you. Any, any other comments? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to item nine point six, more than mining FBT project on page one hundred and one. And I'll hand over to the deputy mayor.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. So I'll move that council endorsed the more than mining FBT project and provide financial support to the value of twenty thousand dollars.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. So the Australian Mining Cities Alliance is, is embarking on a range of advocacy projects going forward in the lead up to various state and federal governments. So we, we just want to put a trickle of funding into that bucket so that we can be reflected across the country in trying to gain more economic development activities around and support from federal government for, for Mount Isa City. I'm happy to support the move and recommend the proposal.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this motion?
Through the chair, how successful have they been with other strategies?
Yeah, the, look, the AMPK has been in a bit of a lull due to a number of reasons, mainly COVID, I think. And as you can appreciate, trying to work across the country with the likes of Calgurley and Broken Hill, Port, you know, Caratha, Port Hedland, all those other mining, great mining cities that we have in our, our country, it has been difficult. So this is really the, the sort of initiation of a, of a programme to, to really move for more economic development activity around the mining cities. And it really is at the doorstep of it, so the success will be following this.
So through the chair, so are they, will the state and federal government listen to them? Have they got any, basically, have they got any clout? Or are we?
It's a lot like the rocks, in a sense, the regional organisation of councils, where if you join together in a number of communities, particularly mining communities, where they provide a lot of the, you know, financial sustenance to the governments that we think we'll have a lot more, well, it's understood that we'll have a lot more clout in terms of, you know, something to counter rather than Mount Isa City or, you know, Calgurley going out by itself trying to present something to the government. It's more of a combined front across all the mining cities.
So where, where is it run from? Like, where, where are most of the committees? Where do the meetings?
They're mostly online, but they have occasional face-to-face meetings. We were due to have one at the Developing Northern Australia Conference, but that tanked because of the sudden lockdown of Darwin, which I got caught up in.
So this is only for a one-off?
Yeah, that's right. It's a, it's a one-off project here now, but then if there's other ones come up, there may be more proposals around it. But this is the first one of this nature, so it'll be, be looking to, you know, make this successful before there's other ventures here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Can I just say, Madam Mayor, I think that, you know, it's really important to note the, you know, the economic development prospects in, in this process. And I think that it's important that Mount Isa City, being one of the premier mining cities in the country, actually get in and support these sorts of things. And I know there's a bit of a risk to them, but I really think it's important for the community.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment on this?
Yeah, just through the chair, Madam Mayor, I, I think it's a, a great initiative for, for the council because the fringe benefit tax, that'll certainly not only with the housing and that, but it'll certainly help hospitality. And I think one other thing we need to probably push while we're on that is the zone allowance. I know we've been pushing it for a long time, but I think the, the zone allowance is probably something that we need to make sure gets, you know, gets a bit of head steam as well.
Yeah, that's a great point. I think the zone allowance has been tried a number of times over, you know, the last twenty, thirty years, but to not much avail by various sectors. But I think this one they see as low hanging fruit, possibly more chance of having this pushed through. And that's, that could be the thin end of the wedge then for, for something as big as the zone allowance change, you know.
Just through the chair, Madam Mayor, look, I think on the zone allowance, there needs to be a certain criteria on that. But with, with this fringe benefit tax project, it, it, it means that we have a say to as well in what goes on. The other mining alliance cities have put in thirty thousand dollars each. We're putting in twenty thousand dollars. I think it's going to a great cause because it, it will bring greater economy into Mount Isa if it gets up. And you don't ask, you don't get told. So I think with the number of mining cities and towns involved, we will have clout at the federal level and hopefully that, the outcome that we want is achieved.
Thank you. And there's no doubt that we need to hunt in packs. And if we all stand together as mining communities and, and sort of let people, let the government know of the challenges we face and, and also go to them with solutions because I'm pretty sure they're aware of some of the challenges we face. But if we can hand over some solutions, I'm sure they'll take it on board.
Through the chair, one more thing. Councillor Barwick, are you on this committee?
Yes.
So you will be giving us updates regularly on?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Thank you. Okay, if that's everyone's questions, all those in favour? And that's carried. So now if you go to your supplementary agenda, which is a different one on your computer, and you go to page three. Oh, and there is a printed copy there if that's easier. And I will hand you over to the deputy mayor.
So which one are we on, sorry?
One oh three, is it?
So it's, is this nine point?
Oh, is it?
Nine point seven?
Nine point seven?
Nine point, yeah, nine point seven.
I don't know what I'm doing. Yeah, no, I've got them on.
No, it's not in that one.
It's in this one? In that one? No, no, you got me that one yesterday, yeah. So what am I going?
Oh, nine point seven. We've got a few teething things at the moment with our new agendas, but quite exciting what's happening. So hopefully, once we've got a few things ironed out, it'll, it'll work more like clockwork.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I've found it now, so that's good. We've got submission to inquire into the housing affordability supply in Australia. So I'll move the recommendation that council approves the attached submission to the federal government inquiry into housing affordability and supply in Australia.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Would someone like to second this motion? McCray. Thank you councillor McCray. Councillor, sorry, deputy mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this?
Yeah, sure. Look, I, this is an inquiry. It's, I believe it's to the federal government and we, we're just really outlining, once again, our Mount Isa situation with housing and how, how it sort of, the challenges that we face around here in, in trying to house workers and families in the city. It goes, you know, the, the extent of it has been captured there in the document, which has been put together by the team, the staff team, which is, I'd just like to pay respects to that, so for the work that's been done there. So, you know, there'll be other councils around, around the, perhaps that'll be submitting around similar, similar sort of challenges that they face in housing their staff and housing their families. So we, we need to be right in there amongst it. Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Would anybody else want to comment on this one?
I'd just like to know who wrote that. Because there's no one.
Through you, Madam Mayor, why?
Never answer a question with a question.
Makes me think it might be the CEO.
They did a good job, whoever did it.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Unfortunately, we were under pretty tight timeframe, so this has been done by myself and the Economic Development Officer. The federal government is not generous in its timeframes for submissions, so I think they're due formally in about a week. So what we've tried to do within the report is cover three or four different, or five things, I think we've listed there off the top of my head. We've looked at greenfield development, we've looked at brownfield or community renewal coming through in there as well. We've looked at public housing stock in there as well. We've indicated that dongas aren't necessarily the answer, nor is temporary housing over a period of time. We've highlighted the fact that if you are going to get people to stay in Mount Isa or regional areas for that matter, you need to have a mix of housing options that are in there as well. We've indicated there that probably wouldn't be a bad idea if the federal government, if they wanted to go into partnership with local government, they could fund part of the infrastructure, whether that be the roads, whether that be the water, the sewer or the telecommunications. So we've put all that forward. And again, we haven't got very long to put it in. If there are changes that councillors would like us to add, please let us know.
Thanks, David.
Thank you, David.
Through the chair, if I could just comment, this, this sort of coincides with the release of a report by the Institute of Australia, the Housing Institute?
No, no, Regional Institute.
Regional Institute of Australia for, they're releasing a report on housing into, in regional Australia, which is quite depth, quite, has quite a lot of depth to it. And I think this will support that, that'll be supportive of what we're trying to do here as well. Thanks.
Thank you. And council participated in a Western Alliance in Richmond earlier this year, I think it was May. And we were on the panel for talking just about this housing. And we're also very vocal within AROC about housing. And it's not just Mount Isa that's in this boat, it's the entire west of Queensland. We're all struggling and we're, we are getting the message out to the state and federal government. And the state government have committed to an extra hundred houses in the west over the next four years, which is fantastic, but there's still a long way to go. So this, this will definitely help. All right.
Through the chair, just on, on this one, like the submission has already been put in, Mr CEO?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Now, submissions come back to council to be endorsed, to be then put in?
I don't know whether it's applicable or not, but with the, do we put anything in there about the first home buyers' grant?
Through you, Madam Mayor. There are two first home buyers' grant, one's through the state government, one's through the federal. So there'd be two different ones. To be quite frank, I don't know enough about the federal one. I know about the state one.
Yeah, well, the state one's not very friendly towards areas like Mount Isa because it's more towards building. It wouldn't, would be maybe worth noting that it needs to go back to what it was where it was a cash. If you wanted to buy a new house, if you wanted to buy a home, a first home buyers' grant was just an amount of cash. Now they've changed it and it has to be, you can only get it for building of a new home. And we know in Mount Isa, it, it's not possible due to many reasons.
I think we've had three new builds in, in the last twelve months, is that right? Not much.
But I just know, as being in real estate, when the, the first home buyers' grant was cash, a lot of, a lot of people got over the line to be able to, to buy their first home because there wasn't a stipulation that it had to be a building, a new home, or a new home that had been renovated to a certain amount of percent.
So through you, Madam Mayor, do you want that included in the submission? Keeping in mind this is to the federal government, not the state?
I will look into what the federal, I don't think the, I only know more about the state one, I'm sorry. So, yeah, so if it's to the federal, no, it wouldn't be worth it. But if anything does come out from state, I think it's something that we should, we should pursue.
So again, through you, Madam Mayor, as was mentioned by the deputy mayor and the mayor, the Norrock are doing a separate submission and that submission will be made directly to the state government and we can certainly raise that through Greg Hoffman in that one. And that way this one can just be bundled and popped in.
Yep, no worries, thank you.
I also did have the opportunity of meeting the Minister for Housing in Brisbane. Was it July now? It's gone very quickly. And I talked exactly about the challenges we have. And this was actually brought up, that they have these first home grants. And I made mention that we'd had only one or two new builds in one year. So it really did, it really didn't suit Mount Isa, and not just Mount Isa. If you looked in the entire west of Queensland, no one's building. So I, I did have the opportunity to pass that on.
Look, and I know, like, at the time Campbell Newman was the one that changed, changed it. And his reasons were to stimulate the building industry along the coast and that, which was fine, but it's not a, our state's very large and as we've seen on many, many occasions, one size doesn't fit all. And it, it did not do good for our, our industry in Mount Isa. And for people that are trying to buy their first home. So, because like we always say, not everyone has got, you know, two incomes from the mines or whatever. So it did help a lot of people get over the line, having that, that cash bonus behind them.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. Any more comments? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Now let's take us to nine point eight. Now let's take us to nine point eight, which is on page 11? Eleven of the supplementary? Now, who's this one belong to? Tourism?
I was going to say, through the chair, I don't think I can move this one because I am named in it. But also, I just wanted to raise that the motion moved is supposed to reflect the minutes, it's taken directly from the minutes of the meeting listed below. And that's not my recollection of what the minutes actually were also.
So through you, madam mayor, can we go backwards and just get someone to move the motion first? And someone to second it?
I'll move it.
Okay, thank you, councillor Coghlan.
Coghlan, sorry, Coghlan.
I'll second.
You'll second it? Thank you, councillor Fortune. All right, would someone like to speak on? Okay, so councillor Coghlan, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
There is one thing I would like to know through the chair. If, with the calendar of events that I know they've been working on, how do, what is the process for local organisations, local community groups that aren't on the advisory committee? How do they go about getting, if they're planning something big on that year, how do they go about getting it on the calendar? For publicity? Oh, sorry.
Sorry, can I just, sorry to interrupt you. Can I just get you to read out the motion that you've moved? Tell me what page it's on?
Page eleven.
Eleven, Coghlan.
The supplementary?
Do you want me to read it out?
Yeah, you read it out.
So the officer's recommendation is that council receives and accepts a hundred years advisory committee meeting minutes for the following dates. The 6th of April twenty one, the 20th of April twenty one, the 18th of May twenty one, the 15th of June twenty one, and the 20th of July twenty one. And that the letter of resignation from council-appointed chair, Mr Ronald, sorry, Mr Ron McCulloch, be received and councillor Peter McCray be appointed acting chair for the remainder of 2021, with a new appointee confirmed by council in the new year. And you've moved that.
I'll move that motion?
Yep, and then councillor Fortune have seconded that motion. And so your question was, how do we get big ticket items on the calendar of events?
I just want to know for community groups and local organisations, I know there's a calendar of event for the, being planned for 2023. So I'd just like to know how community groups can let us know that, or let the committee know that they're planning something.
Through you, madam mayor, if I may. We've got a meeting scheduled on Tuesday, the 31st, next Tuesday. Would it be okay if we raised that issue with the committee then? Because then the staff will be there and they can.
Yep. As long as there's plenty of media on it, so that our groups know how to get in there.
Yeah, definitely, very important. And we were very strong in having this go live as soon as possible so people can start planning, because 2023 is not far away.
Yep. Through the chair, madam mayor, I seconded the motion to create debate over the recommendation. I was at that meeting on the 20th or the 7th. And my recollection after Mr Ron McCulloch resigned was that councillor Peter McCray was to be appointed the chair for the remainder of the, of the planning process. So the second part of that motion there isn't my recollection of the meeting. And I wanted to put that up for debate, I suppose, and.
I was there too. And it was a bit confusing, wasn't it? Because we were talking about we need an acting chair. And then we sort of voted on it. And then I think you brought up, well, actually, this isn't right. We have to go through a motion. And then that's where it got a little bit.
It had to come back to council.
Yeah, got a bit confusing, I guess.
Oh, sorry, thanks. Let's see, through the chair, yeah, look, I think council needs to appoint the chair of these committees. I think the intention of the committee on the 20th, the 7th, was that councillor McCray be the chair of the Hundred Years Committee going forward. But that was more or less, could only be a recommendation because the committee can't make that decision. So it needs to come to council for approval. And I would suggest, just following on from what councillor Fortune's saying, is that we just amend that part of the motion there to appoint councillor McCray for the duration of the Hundred Years Committee going forward.
I don't, I don't think that's what we agreed on though at the meeting. So I don't know if we have to go back to a meeting and agree on that. Because we were talking about just for the rest of the year. And I haven't got a problem with it, don't get me wrong. But that's not what we were talking about at the meeting.
My understanding through the chair that we've put the motion up, seconded it, and we discussed it.
I think I put the motion up.
To vote it up or down and then move on to another.
Yeah.
Sorry, through you, madam mayor. The one thing I'd want to check is the terms of reference to the advisory committee. I don't know if there's a link there on the chairperson of the committee. And that may be why we're in that situation.
Yeah.
So my advice to council would be to proceed with appointing councillor McCray for the remainder of 2021. And then if needs be, simply bring another council report back to validate the councillor going on for a further period. If the councillors have.
Yeah, through the chair, look, we're sort of well down the track with the Hundred Years now. I'm, you know, reluctant to see any changes going forward. And I'd really, you know, that's, it was a bit of a loss losing Ron McCulloch. But he had personal reasons for resigning, which is unfortunate. And otherwise, he'd still be doing the role. I think councillor McCray's done an admirable job so far. And I'd really like to see that. And in terms of just trying to keep the momentum going, I'd like to see us try and move that today if we can. But how we can get hold of the terms of reference quickly, I don't know.
I'll go and get the terms of reference.
Yeah, look, I definitely moved the motion, that's why I remember it. And we did, we did say something similar to that. Now, I've got no problem with councillor Peter McCray becoming chair for the rest of the term. But I think we should take this back to the committee and just make sure we're, you know, just being, you know, we're not dictating, we're just going back to the committee. Is this what you want? Is this how we're going to go forward?
Sorry, through you, madam mayor. Again, just my advice, the simplest thing to do is to proceed with the recommendation. And if needs be, we bring back another report that boosts councillor McCray into the position for that extended period of time. That'll give me a chance to go and find out where the issue is.
And I don't think it changes anything anyway, if things just move on.
Sorry, just through the chair, I probably would like a letter sent to Ron, just wishing him all the best to his family and all that as well, please.
Okay, so if there's no more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. All right, so that puts us back on the updated final agenda. And that is going to take us up to page 103. So I'll just give, all right, I'm already there. Is everyone on page 103? And I will hand over to the deputy mayor.
Page one oh three, yeah, that's where I was before. Okay, so we've got our advertising spending policy version seven. Recommendation is that council adopts the advertising spending policy version seven as presented. Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Thank you, councillor Fortune. Deputy mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, thanks, madam mayor. It's a policy around legislation. And it asks the local government to do certain things around advertising. So the purposes of this really are about advertising to provide information or education to the public. And also, the information or education is provided in the public interest. And it's done in a way that's consistent with the local government's advertising spending policy. And the other item in its purpose is the advertising is promoting for the payment of a fee, an idea, goods and services to the public. And that's fairly much the limit of this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Councillor Fortune, would you like any comments?
Just the commencement of it, there's just, in the documentation, it says March 2021. Obviously, it'll be after endorsement from council.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, that takes us to 10.2, which is on page 110. And I'll hand over to councillor Stretton.
Yeah, just office recommendations there. Council receives and accepts the July 2021 local laws monthly report.
Thank you, councillor Stretton. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second, Barwick.
Thank you, councillor Barwick. Councillor Stretton, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Just a couple of things happened in July. We had the free pet day out here on the lawn, it was well received. And also, we had the riverbed cleanup by local laws helping out there in the reduction burn. Had the Queensland Police and all the other departments join in. I think we had something like 74 tonnes of rubbish picked up out of the riverbed, which is not good. Work in progress.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Through the chair, yeah, I'd just like to just make note how much work's being done at the pound. I mean, if you look at the figures for the last year, we're doing three to 400 impoundments a quarter, which clears up the, you know, the streets of Mount Isa of loose animals around the place. So I think there's a lot of work being done by the animal management facility. I'd also just like to point out the number of feral cats we're removing from the system. And in the last 12 months, we've removed about 500, somewhere around 500, I think, by the look of it. So just make a note of that. Thanks, madam mayor.
Thank you. No other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so that now takes us to 10.3, which is on page 112. Back to the deputy mayor for the financial monthly report.
Yeah, thanks, madam mayor. So the figures are there before us. I'm finding my way through the new format, but it's looking pretty good. The capital expenditure activity remains high. The creditors' operating capital expenditure, as of the 30th of June, are in excess of $6 million. Majority of this was paid in July 2021. And council anticipate more progress, claims being made in August 2021. Yeah, so the operating result for the year is $31,000, sorry, for the month is $31,000 in July against a budget of $71,000. So we're slightly down on there. Marginally behind because of lower contract works, fees and charges, partially offset by lag in processing waste revenue, which will be rectified during the month of August this month. I'd just like to talk about the rates for a minute. There, there's a, on page, what is it, 114? Sorry, 115. Yeah, 114. There's information there relating to the outstanding rate balances. So at the end of July, it was, it's improved from there at the moment. But at the end of July, it was 8,000, sorry, 8,900,000, nearly $9 million, of which about a third of that is current and owing and not yet payable. However, the rest of it is a sort of an amount that's really needs, we need to focus on in the administration. And so the, that's been our approach, is to move towards recoveries and reconstruction, proprietary limits, to commence with the summonses for outstanding rates and charges going forward. So I expect to see the results of that coming through from, for the rest of this backend of this calendar year. And I believe already, just looking at this background, that it may have dropped significantly already down to 7.2 million, still outstanding. So, yeah, it seems to be having an impact already. So thanks, madam mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so does anyone else have any comments on this one? Nope, all right.
Could we have a second, please?
Second.
Actually, I think we went into moving the motion and then straight into the thing. Yeah, so thank you, councillor Tully. Anyone, any comments on this one?
Want me to repeat all that?
Yes, yes, please.
Please do.
All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us to item 10.4 on page 119. And that's the accounting position papers, AS, sorry, AA SB 136 impairment of assets. Handing over again, I believe, to.
It's 119. So, madam mayor, I'll move the recommendation that council declare the Outback at Isa complex a community asset within, in the scope of the Australian Accounting Standard Board, AA SB 136 on the impairment of assets under paragraph 32.1.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
McCray.
Thank you, councillor McCray. Councillor, deputy mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, so this is, and I probably get out of my depth really quickly here, but this is largely a process for measuring the accounts by the regulatory authorities and how the council goes about recognizing assets in terms of their accounting practices. And there's some benefits by transferring the Outback at Isa, which is a, from a commercial asset into a, being a community asset of council, because it's treated quite differently in terms of a range of things that I'm not familiar with. And I'd probably refer to Chalaya to give us an outline of that if she would. Thanks.
Marco Fang? Thank you.
Oh, here you go. Thank you, deputy mayor. So I think you've covered it quite adequately. This is something that we have to do as part of our end of financial year process. And it's just around assessing the income guarantee and capacity of Outback at Isa. So our recommendation is that perhaps it fits more into the category of community asset, considering all the additional services that are provided, including preservation of history and culture. So that's why it's been brought to council. The alternative is to go ahead and test it for impairment and recognize that impact.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this one? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. So this now takes us to page 123. And I will hand over to the deputy mayor again.
Yeah, thanks, madam mayor. So this is the corporate services monthly report. I'll move that council receives and accepts the July 2021 corporate services monthly report.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Deputy mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, thanks, madam mayor. Just outlined the extent of work that council's doing in the interface between council and the community. You know, there's telephone calls listed there, averaging 119 per day. A total of 2,164 telephone calls were answered. I believe there's 10% that were, went through the message. 607 customer requests recorded in our database across all council departments. And the top four are 124 local laws matters, 113 revenue cases. That's around payments of rates and such, changes of addresses and things. There's 104 water and sewage issues and 91 management issues. So, waste management issues, sorry. So of those 607 cases, there are 498 were completed during the month, which is a good result, leaving 109 remaining open with further action required. That's all. Thanks, madam mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I've just got a question with the property searches. There's 39 and 43 in June and July. Is that to do with the sale of the property or is that something else? No?
Through you, madam mayor, just searches on the.
Through Madam Mayor, just searches on the properties.
Uh, through the chair, can I just ask, with, what is the process when people do email or ring council? Um, they have a complaint, they have an issue, and they always get a reply to say that their complaint or issue has been taken. But then that's all they get. I'm, I'm getting, it's not a lot, but it's enough to be noted that people are coming to me in the community saying, yep, I, I, you know, I put the email in, there was a complaint, but, and then I got an email back to say that council have got it, but I haven't heard from anyone in two weeks or three weeks. Like, what, what is the process then for those people to do? Do they then make it a complaint against council? Or do they just email again and say, this is still outstanding, I haven't, I haven't got a reply, what's going on?
Through Madam Mayor, um, and Director May wished to make comment as well. But, um, all of those ones are, um, everyone has recorded, everyone has got back to. Um, I haven't seen a big long list of outstanding complaints, and usually that gets raised with me. I'm, I'm happy to have a look around and see if I can find another one. Uh, but most of the time, as indicated by the report, we get packed to people, um, in relation to complaints and issues very quickly. Um, if a person is not in the yes, they can make a complaint about council. Um, they can do that through the department, they can do that through various, um, the ombudsman, all of those different ones. I don't think we've got, be happy to be corrected, but I don't think we've got any coming from the ombudsman at this point in time.
Oh, I just, I, I just, I think it's more, council does get back to them to say that, that the issue is there. But then it must go to a section, and the section are supposed to get hold of them, and it's not happening.
So if, if you have those issues, can you send them through to, um, uh, to carry in the first instance? And if needs be, tho- those will be dealt with, uh, via Chalaya's.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. All right, so that now takes us to item ten point six, and that's on page one hundred and thirty for those who are using the new agenda. And this is the Splashes monthly report for July twenty twenty-one. So who's this? Is that yours?
Yep, um, recommendation that council receives and accepts the July twenty twenty-one Splashes monthly report.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. Would someone like to second this motion?
Second, Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Uh, councillor, uh, councillor Coghlan, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Um, just at the moment, like, everyone knows Splashes is, is, um, closed with all the work going on. But hopefully getting ready for the grand opening and, um, all the schools back in doing the swimming lessons. Very important for the children to be able to swim. So I think that's about all there is at the moment.
Thank you. Do we have a date on when it's going to be open? Okay. Maybe reopen in the middle of the school holidays.
Through you, Madam Mayor. We'll bring an update back to council.
All right, thank you. That's great. All right, if there's no more questions, all those in favour? And that's carried. So that takes us now to the, uh, item ten point seven, the library monthly report, which is on page one hundred and thirty-three. And I'll hand over to councillor Peter McCray.
Um, I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the July twenty twenty-one library monthly report.
Thank you councillor McCray. Can, uh, thank you councillor Fortune for seconding that. And, um, with councillor McCray, would you like to comment on this one?
Um, yeah, um, once again, the library's had a busy month. In the last month, they've started a chess club. They've displayed home, had a homeschool art exhibition. They've been running their children's programs, the first five forever baby rhyme, time and storytime, had a visiting author, and also celebrated NADOC week.
Thank you councillor McCray. Anyone else like to comment on this one? All those in favour? And that's carried. So that takes us now to item ten point eight, which is on one hundred and thirty-six. And that's the economic and community development monthly report. And who's that?
Right, I'll think councillor McCray.
Me?
Over to councillor McCray.
Look out. Um, I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the July twenty twenty-one Economic and Community Development Monthly Report.
Thank you councillor McCray. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Um, councillor McCray, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Um, yeah, I think we've covered off on a few of these in previous reports. But we've, um, been continually having our hundred years, um, meetings, we've had the pet day. And we're continuing to work on the tourism strategy. And that's about it.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one?
Can I just ask through the chair on page one hundred and thirty-seven, under Isa Festival twenty twenty-one? Um, that last line, it said food and market stalls have been registered for the Wednesday night street party, which is set to go ahead. Should that not be taken out? Yeah.
That probably should be taken out.
Sorry.
Good, good pick up. I wasn't sure this was mine with the new heading, that's all.
You're going to blame me?
I know, and apologies if I've taken someone's report, if I didn't mean to.
Yeah, if that could just be taken out, that would be, be good, because it's an official record.
I'd, I'd just like to thank all, all the organizations that participated in the virtual parade. It was, um, a lot of fun watching those videos and, um, I'm really, yeah, it was a really hard choice picking a winner. And I guess, um, the good part was that council actually gave the winner a thousand dollars. But also everyone who participated got five hundred dollars. And I think that was, you know, a really great outcome in the end.
And if no one has any other comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. And this one now is the, um, ten point nine, which is on page one hundred and forty, which is the environmental and biosecurity monthly report. And I believe that is councillor Streton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the chair, recommendations there. Council receives and accepts the July twenty twenty-one environmental and biosecurity monthly report.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Um, would you like to speak on?
Yeah, bit of a, uh, overall overview there. Council delivered the following services for July twenty-one. Four service requests in relation to public health concerns, inspected twenty-one food businesses, investigated three incidents to relating to littering and illegal dumping, inspected a hundred and ten sites across Mount Isa and Kenwell, treating five for active breeding sites for mosquitoes, continued spraying for invasive weed species, investigated four environmental cases.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one? Thank you. All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And I believe the next one is on the page one hundred and forty-three. It's ten point ten, Waste Management Monthly Report for June and July for twenty twenty-one. I'll hand back over to councillor Streton.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, officers' recommendations there. Council receives and accepts the June and July twenty twenty-one Waste Management Monthly Report.
Thank you councillor Streton. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Just a bit too quick there. Councillor Streton, would you like to speak on behalf of this?
Yeah, um, waste management's been going hard. Um, we completed the shed out, uh, storage facility shed out at the, um, the, uh, waste management in, um, June. Um, the new waste transfer station is close to being completed. The tender for the material recycling facility is due to be advertised in the last week of July. And that should be underway by the end of twenty twenty-one. The two new garbage trucks hopefully be here within six weeks. And that will alleviate a lot of the problems we've got around the town with, uh, picking up the bins.
Yep, there'll be a lot of, um, happy people over at the depot, that's for sure, when they get here. All right, if there's no more comments?
Just through the chair, um, I know it's been asked about in workshops and that. But would we be able to get some sort of report brought back to us at the next workshop about, um, uh, the amnesty days that we've talked about for disposing of rubbish? We've talked about that before, but nothing has progressed on it.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I'm, um, are you aware of Amnesty Day? No, I'm not aware of Amnesty Day.
I can speak to it, David. Um, the, uh, in the, in the past, we've, um, we had two days to coincide with the shift workers because for on, for off. Um, and it was a day to, for households to bring their rubbish in and not be charged.
Through the chair, at the time, I thought we did that, um, leading up to the, um, waste levy. So everyone could have a good clean out before the waste levy came in. I didn't realize it was going to be an ongoing.
Yeah, we, we did discuss it to keep it going.
Yep.
The only reason we had the two days is because of two different shifts, mainly in Mount Isa. It was, uh, very well received in the community.
I'm happy to look at it something.
And don't forget, it's only for household.
The, the only reason I did bring it up is that we, we had spoke about it and it was, um, it was very, very well received in the community when, um, the previous council did it. I know it was said it was about before the waste levy and all that. But it is a really good idea for people to be able to have that weekend, just to have a big clean out and, um, get rid of it.
I can tell you a few households that probably need to use that. Take that advantage.
Sorry, through Madam Mayor, Director Smith.
Even if it could be put up at the next workshop to be spoken about again.
Sounds good.
That'd be good.
Okay, any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so this now takes us to infrastructure services reports. Oh, so if you go to your supplementary agenda. Page thirty-eight. This one, who would this one belong to? Is, um, councillor McCray? Oh, I see. Okay, so. So this is item ten point eleven, North Queensland Sports Foundation, twenty twenty-one North Queensland Sports Star Awards Council delegation. So the officer's recommendation is, and if someone would like to move this, that council nominates councillor Peter McCray and councillor Paul Streton to assess the local nominees for the twenty twenty-one Sports Star Awards and select one nominee per category as council submissions to the North Queensland Sports Foundation. And that council uses funding assisting, assistance available from the North Queensland Sports Foundation to subsidize the associated costs of nominees attending, attendance to the North Queensland Sports Foundation Sports Star Awards presentation and chatters towers on the thirtieth of October twenty twenty-one. Who would like to move that motion? Thank you, deputy mayor. Who would like to second this motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Um, who would like to talk on behalf of this motion?
Um, I can speak on that if you like. Um, that is standard procedure, what's happened, um, in all of the previous years. Everyone nominates for their category, we go through and there's a selection criteria process that we follow and, um, pick the best candidates. The amount of funding provided by the North Queensland Sports Foundation is not enough to encourage anyone to actually travel. I think it's usually about three hundred dollars, which is divided between the people that nominate. So it, it, um, just goes a little way towards helping with that fuel, I guess.
Through Madam Mayor, could councillor McCray and Streton indicate if they're prepared to accept the nominations?
Yes, we accept the nomination, once again.
Sorry, through Madam Mayor, otherwise the, the motion.
I'd assume that.
Congratulations, councillor Streton and councillor McCray.
Thanks so much.
Uh, through the chair, this, um, th- this would be council's nominations, but, um, local sporting organizations are more than happy to be able to still put in their own to the North Queensland Sports Federation.
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor, yes, that, that's advertised throughout social media, isn't it?
I, I just know that a lot of groups, their, um, governing bodies has, have sent out the nominations, so.
Sorry councillor Coghlan, I wasn't aware of that in the past. I thought the process was if you, um, came from this area, the sporting bodies put their nominations into council to represent Mount Isa at the awards. I think that's been the process in the past. I'm not sure if it's changed this year.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not too sure if someone could check on it, because I know that, um, community groups are being sent out, like, the opportunity to nom- and being encouraged to, to nominate from their association.
But usually they send it into council and then we select one person from each category. I don't think they, or unless they submit directly to the North Queensland Sports Foundation and then they forward it to us.
Yeah, I'm not too sure. If someone could, um, check up on that.
And then they send it to us? Yeah, okay.
Righto.
Okay, so we're cleared up on that?
Yeah.
All right. Any more questions? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Thank you. And then we go back to the updated final agenda. And this is eleven point one, which is the major projects monthly report. And that is on page, um, one forty-eight. Uh, is it councillor, is this councillor?
McTully.
Yep. Uh, over to you councillor Tully for this one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the July twenty twenty-one major projects monthly report as presented.
Thank you councillor Tully. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's just, um, a, a few, um, important, um, milestones there with the council's capital program for the twenty twenty-one, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two financial year. Um, includes the delivery of a hundred and forty-four projects and the, um, the delivery of these, forty-five percent of in the planning phase, nine percent design phase, thirteen percent in the procurement phase, fourteen in the delivery phase, and nineteen percent is in the completion phase. So, um, yeah, the projects are going along well. There's, uh, the, the water meters, um, is, is probably one that, you know, a lot of people would be interested in. So that's, um, to my knowledge, has been awarded. So that should be hopefully, um, you know, completed in the next several months, you know, to December. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tully. Any other questions or comments?
If I may, through you, Madam Mayor, um, just in relation to the water meters, there may be some holdups encountered through the transport of the water meters from overseas. So we're working with the people at the moment, but there are extended timeframes. As many councils would know in relation to delivery of fleet from overseas. But also, um, I believe the water meters may be impacted by the shortage of, um, computer chips that have been produced around the world at the moment as well. So we definitely will, um, have water meters installed, uh, by the end of the, um, calendar year. Uh, but whether we have all of the water meters installed by the calendar, uh, end of the calendar year will depend on shipping, uh, from overseas. Is that right, Director Wallace?
Thanks, David. Um, just, just on, on that, will that have much bearing on the, our funding and whether we have to, you know, acquittal?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Uh, that, all government agencies realize that constraints COVID's placing on supply at the moment. So most of them are pretty flexible in relation to how things are delivered over this period of time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Which takes us now to page one hundred and fifty-two, which is eleven point two, Works and Operations Monthly Report. Okay, so. Councillor Tully, over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, uh, I'd like to recommend that council receives and accepts the July twenty twenty-one Works and Operations Monthly Report.
Thank you councillor Tully. Uh, seconded for that.
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Would you like to speak on behalf of this councillor Tully?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just, um, just, just the tie-up with the, um, street festival that, that obviously didn't go ahead, so there was a lot, um, I mean, which is a shame, but with the radio going ahead, that, um, you know, that, that, uh, took up some work, um. But, uh, uh, other than that, um, that's about it, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions or comments on this?
I'd just like to speak on the parks and gardens part of it and, um, thank the workers for the bins in the CBD, um, to my knowledge have all been cleaned and the new ones have been ordered. Um, and just, is there any way we could look at, a few of the parks around town have only got one or, well, most of them have only got one bin in there. Um, is there any way we could increase that to have another bin in some of the more popular parks?
Through you, Madam Mayor, um, that, that can be referred on to the team leader of Waste Services and, um, she can have a look and see if there's the opportunity for more bins to be put out. There are a few things happening in waste management, obviously, which we just need to review at this time.
I did, I know it's not too much of a problem during the week, but, uh, when birthday parties or barbecues are held, um, you only need one medium-sized one and the bin's actually overflowing.
Thank you for that councillor Coglan. There's no more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried, so then the next item is on a hundred, page a hundred and fifty-six and it's eleven point three and it's water and sewage monthly report.
Be with me, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, over to you.
Officer recommendations there, council receives and accepts the July twenty twenty-one monthly water and sewage report.
Thank you, can I get a second for that report?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully, um, councillor Stratten, would you like to speak on behalf of that motion?
Um, just, uh, one thing along to touch on was the, um, water meters, but, um, David talked about that earlier, so won't worry about that, um, and also like to know we did, um, test the sewage and passed for COVID. Tracy, would you like to give us a bit of a report on that, David, come back all right?
Through, through you, Madam Mayor, we've been testing, uh, daily, Director Wallace, can you speak to that please? So through you, Madam Mayor, we'll continue that testing, um, that testing, I think I sent an email out to councillors. The results of that testing, you can look up on a website and see, um, wherever anyone's picked up fragments.
Okay. That's good, thank you.
Thank you, any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Now we go to page a hundred and sixty-three and it's eleven point four, the Outback at Isa master plan.
Is that, is that?
That's you, Pete.
Does that mean terrorism or is it Phil Myco? Who was that?
Tourism, events, sports, councillor McCrae's portfolio.
Thank you, I'd like to move that council adopt the master plan for the Outback at Isa and commence the process towards a development of detailed documentation in order to assist with future funding allocations. And that council review the location and nature of the art gallery.
Thank you councillor McCrae, can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Can, thank you councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of that motion?
Um, I sure can, I think we're all pretty impressed with, um, the master plan that the consultants came back with and we're looking to go to the next phase, obviously, um, to apply for funding, we need to have shovel-ready projects and, um, this will just move that in that direction.
Anybody else got any comments?
Uh, through the chair, yeah, look, I, I think it's a wonderful, um, master plan's been developed. Um, it really does cover a lot and it, it gives us a, a way forward to apply for funding, significant funding to, to add to the centre, um, and to really give it a good refurb and a re-, um, a reorientation of the, the attractions that are there. Um, and I think when you look through the master plan, you'll see, um, what a, what a fabulous, um, um, iconic place the Outback at Isa will, will be if, if, um, if most of that, um, items in the plan are completed. It also gives everybody, um, something to draw back on when there are decisions that need to be made around, uh, what's happening at the venue and, um, how we do, how we are going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, has, has, has this still got room for improvement, this master plan? Because I noticed that we didn't have any holograms and, um, we didn't touch much on the history of this master plan, so, you know, there's not just the, the art gallery, but the, the, the history, we haven't got a house for that, we sort of, um, haven't touched on it with this plan, I sort of thought we were.
So it may be that Director Smith speaks to this as well, but as I understand it, it covered all the feedback that council provided, um, if I remember correctly. Um, there is also, um, what's required now is the second part of this, so you've got your master plan now, it's about your detailed design. I think there's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the current budget, um, to actually progress it down there and that's when you deal with the, the nuts and bolts and the interpretation director?
Uh, no, no, that makes sense, because I, I know we were sort of throwing around ideas like a, a, a loaders simulator and things like that and holograms and that's, okay, no, that's, that's good. Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, let's make sure I'm on the same page now, um, so item twelve, notice of motions is nil. And that takes us to item thirteen, consideration of confidential business items. Yep, so. The time is now ten thirty-seven and I will adjourn into closed business.
So I'd like to move that the council considers the confidential reports listed below in a meeting closed to the public in accordance with section two seven five of the Local Government Act twenty twenty twelve. Thirteen point one, Waste Management Market Testing. This matter is considered to be confidential under the section two seven five b of the Local Government Act, and that council is satisfied that the discussion in this matter in an open meeting would on balance be contrary to public interest as it deals with industrial matters affecting employees. Thirteen point two, Order and Risk Management Committee meeting minutes dated twelfth of July twenty twenty one, unconfirmed. This matter is considered to be confidential under the section two seven five h of the Local Government Act, and that council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter in an open meeting would on balance be contrary to the public interest as it deals with other business for which the public discussion would be likely to prejudice the interests of the local government or someone else, or enable a person to gain financial advantage. Thirteen point three, Landfill Tokens. This matter is considered to be confidential under section two seven five c of the Local Government Act, and the council is satisfied that discussion of this matter in an open meeting would on balance be contrary to the public interest as it deals in local government's budget. Can I get someone to second that motion? Thank you, councillor Tully. All those in favour? I think carried, and it's now ten fifty one, and we're now moving into closed business.
To move the motion that we now move from closed business into open business, can I get a second for that motion?
Second of Fortune.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. All those in favour? And that's carried. Time is now 11:29am and the meeting is now reopened. We're going to start with... We're going through it properly?
Yeah.
That's probably the better idea anyway. So we're going to, if you can go to page 267, which is the Waste Management Market Testing.
Yep.
Okay, and is there a councillor that... Okay, and is there a councillor that should be...
Yep, I'll read it.
Yep, thank you councillor Streton.
13.1, Waste Management Market Testing Recommendation. Council, in order to ensure it is providing an optimal service to the community, undertake a market testing process for the provision of curbside collection services.
Thank you councillor Streton. Would someone like to second that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune. All those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us to the next item, which is on page 270, and that is 13.2. It's the Audit and Risk Management Committee Meeting Minutes, dated the 12th of July 21, unconfirmed. I'll hand over to the deputy mayor.
Thanks, madam mayor. I'll move that council receives and accepts the unconfirmed audit risk management committee meeting minutes dated the 12th of July 2021 as presented.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Would someone like to second that?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. All those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us now to the last item, which is 13.3, landfill tokens. Thank you councillor Tully.
Through the chair, madam mayor, I would like to put in that I could be perceived as having a prescribed conflict of interest due to my relationship with the letter writer in this item. He is engaged to my goddaughter. But I believe I can stay in the room and be unbiased, but I'd like to leave it to the other councillors.
Okay.
At their discretion.
Thank you councillor Coglan. Councillor Fortune?
Thank you, madam mayor. I would prefer councillor Coglan left the room for this decision.
Councillor Streton?
She's fine to stay.
Councillor Macrae?
Sorry, what was it? Oh, yeah, I'll stay.
Okay, so that's majority. All right, so you're welcome to stay councillor Coglan. Thank you for that, and we've noted. Okay, so I will hand over to councillor Streton.
13.3, thank you, madam mayor. Office's recommendation there that council makes six tip tokens available for each residential property in Mount Isa, with each token equalling the value of one gate fee entry for a car, car and trailer, van or utility to the waste management facility in 2021/22 for domestic residential waste disposal only.
Thank you councillor Streton. Would someone like to second that motion? Macrae. Thank you councillor Macrae. All those in favour? And that's carried.
Sorry, can you invite councillor Tully back in before the meeting closes?
Okay, I'd just like to thank everybody here today who contributed, and the time is now 11:33pm, am.